All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 24th. It is 7:02 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whose name we pray.
All right. Present in Town Council chambers, Councilmember Katuska, Councilmember Maurer, Councilmember Martin, Vice Chair Lepelis. I am here. Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Wales. Here electronically is Councilmember Reed. There are eight members of council present. I'm going to make a motion at this time to amend our agenda under Section 6 Appointments Item, add Item D, the nomination of Chrissy Fensor Martinez to the Board of Education, filling the vacancy created by the resignation of Nicholas Kapoor, term ending November 27, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion. I believe that Councilmember Maurer has a piece of information to share with council at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Former County. Yes, after consultation with the town attorney, it was discussed that per charter, not only is there no conflict by somebody working for a vendor or a contractor, subcontractor of the town, but it's actually specifically called for within the charter to be allowed so long as certain procedures are followed. Those procedures include if you are working for a vendor or contractor, once you are sworn in, sending a letter to the Board of Ethics stating that you work for the contractor, what contractor you work for, and stating that you will recuse yourself from votes having to deal with said contractor so long as you work for them. That information was made known to Ms. Fensor Martinez. She agreed that she would do such things, send such a letter if she were to be appointed and sworn in, as she had stated she had planned on recusing herself from those votes anyways. So as per the charter, it seems ripe to bring back to the council. And also, there was a question as to the validity of the vote as per the instructions of our meeting. So it also makes sense to bring it up just to make sure that the vote is valid.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. This is Ms. O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, since we've had a very long week with a lot of different op-eds and a lot of different opinions flying around, and to dovetail with what Mr. Maurer has just said, if you could read this into the record so that everyone has a clear understanding of what he is referring to with regards to the charter, I would read it myself. I don't have my cheaters.
All right. Mr. O'Rourke, you mean? Chapter 12 of our Charter, Section 1, Conflict of Interest?
Yes.
All right. Section 1, Conflict of Interest. No elected or appointed town official shall derive by reason of holding such office any financial benefit as the result of any contract with the town or Board of Education or any sale to the town or said Board of Education of any materials, supplies, or services. Any employee or official having any financial or personal interest as designated in Section 10A3 point D of the Monroe Code shall file a written disclosure of said interest with the town clerk and the Board of Ethics as soon as they become aware of such interest and shall disqualify themselves from voting or participating in the decision on the matter. Said written disclosure shall set forth in detail the nature and extent of such interest. Violation of this section with knowledge, express, or implied of any person or corporation participating in such contract, transaction, or decision shall render the same voidable by the council or by court competent jurisdiction.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. This is a vote to amend the agenda to add the nomination of Chrissy Fensor Martinez as Item D, as in Dave, under our appointment, which is Section 6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Kevin Reed, aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes. This is now Item D on our agenda. I'm going to... If there are no objections, I'm going to pass Consent Calendar as presented. Hearing no objections, I'm going to pass Consent Calendar as presented. Item 4, Communication Items A through G. I ask those that be incorporated into the minutes meeting. And I'm going to use my discretion to take appointments up next. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-135. Resolved that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of James Weinberg of 59 Bullage Pond Road to the Board of Police Commissioners with a term ending October 13, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepelis. Discussion. One moment. All right. James has many years of experience in private sector corporate management. He has volunteered for the town of Monroe in multiple capacities over the years, including the Board of Education, Board of Ethics, Planning Zoning Commission, Inland Wetlands, and most recently as Town Constable. Jim considers himself a problem solver while always keeping what's best for the town of Monroe and its citizens at the forefront. Jim graduated from the United States Merchant Marine Academy and currently works for Clarkson's Shipping Services. This fills the vacancy of the expired term of Ronald Malani. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 22-135. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 820. Item B. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-136. Resolved that Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Elaine Miller of 29 Parson Road to the Library Board of Trustees with a term ending November 30, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepelis. Discussion. Mrs. Miller has lived in Monroe for 35 years and graduated from the University of Connecticut School of Pharmacy. Elaine is the mother of five children that have enjoyed the use of Monroe's library. Elaine appreciates the growth and evolution of the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library and wants to give back to the community through service on this board. Elaine has worked as a hospital pharmacy manager, the vice president of a condominium association, and has served on multiple committees within the Monroe Public Schools system. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Linda Fracassini. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martin?
I'd just like to point out personally, I've known Mrs. Maurer for a very long time now. I think this is a wonderful appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Mr. Chair? Councilmember Maurer?
Echoing those sentiments, I also have had the great pleasure of knowing Elaine Miller for quite some time. I think she'll do a great job. I also just want to take a moment to recognize all of the service of Mrs. Fracassini, who has served this town in a number of different capacities for a long time.
Absolutely. Maybe they're calling in to discuss this point. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 22-136. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 820. All right. Oh, yes, Mrs. Miller. I almost forgot. I told you in the hallway. Please come on down. First selectman would like to swear in.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm as the case may be and faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Monroe Life and Order Trustees. The death of your ability to help you God upon penalty of murder.
Here, my next to be. All right, thank you. Congratulations. All right. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-137 to appoint Victor Yanasey of 107 Cutler's Farm Road to the position of Constable for a term ending November 27, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepelis. Discussion.
Jonathan, Mr. Chair.
It's Kevin.
I just wanted to say we did interview Victor in Allen A. And we reached consensus 302. Bring him to council.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Yanasey has previously been Constable in Monroe, I believe, for 14 years, is what we heard. He's looking forward to coming back and serving the town and its residents in this role. This will fill the vacancy of Jim Weinberg. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor adopting Resolution 22-137, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 820. Item D, Councilmember Martin? Or Councilmember Maurer?
It's dealer's choice. I would like to move to adopt the resolution considering acting upon the resolution regarding the appointment of Chrissy Fensor Martinez of 79 Old Castle Drive to the Board of Education with a term ending November 27, 2023, filling the vacancy created by the resignation of Nicholas Kapoor.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Vice Chair Lepelis. Just for bookkeeping, we'll have it as Resolution 22-141. 41, got it. 141. 22-141. Mr. Maurer?
Thank you. Not to sound like a broken record, but Chrissy Fensor Martinez holds a bachelor's and master's degree in Special Education from Southern Connecticut State University. She is also a Connecticut Certified School Administrator. Chrissy has worked as a special education teacher, supervisor, and director of Special Education in Connecticut for more than 25 years. Her current role is a Senior Director of School Partnerships for Aspire Living and Learning, Inc., where she oversees the consultation to school districts across the state of Connecticut and New Hampshire. Aspires a nonprofit human services agency that serves youth and adults with disabilities across five states. Chrissy is also an adjunct professor in the Department of Special Education at the University of St. Joseph in West Hartford. She has recently completed a two-year term as Secretary of the Monroe Special Education PTA, or SEPTA, and was on the Board of Directors for the Connecticut Reading League, formerly the Dyslexia Society of Connecticut, for several years. As previously discussed, Ms. Fensor Martinez, upon being appointed and sworn in, will be filing a notice of conflict with the town clerk and the Board of Ethics as to aspire stating that she would recuse herself from votes dealing with their contracts with Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. I think the disclosure is important for transparency in all elected positions. So I appreciate the fact that the nominee will be filing that upon her appointment. Any other discussion? Nope. All right. We're going to do roll call vote here. Councilmember Katuska?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepelis?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Wales?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Resolution 22-141 has passed 820. Candidate is not here today, so I will just... I don't know if we can swear someone in. He is Zoom. I thought she was signed on, but she can...
She's here.
Oh, she is here, okay. Okay. So we'll wait. And that's Kevin Reed. That's it. 820.
Wait, what? What happened with me?
No, nothing, Kevin. I was...
Oh, my God. We do not want to go through this again.
No, we're fine. We're fine.
Good. Well, congratulations, Chrissy. I don't know if she's there.
She's on her way in. She didn't get sworn in.
All right. All right. Sounds good.
There'd be traffic in Monroe sometimes.
Evening. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm as the case may be that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Connecticut, and the Charter of the town of Monroe, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Monroe Board of Education to the best of your abilities, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I was clapping. I know you can't hear me or see me.
Yeah, I will. I will ask our recording secretary to note the clapping.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll begin with public participation. Is there any member of the public here this evening? So we'll start within the room. Please come forward. Name for the record. So we'll start in here, and then I'll go to online. Please come forward.
Jennifer Aguilar, 32, Surrey Lane. I just wanted to thank the council for Jason... First and foremost, Jason Maurer, for all of his hard work in having Ms. Martinez reintroduced to the council and thank Mr. Lido for his consult and thank the council for your reconsideration. I think it was the right thing to do. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening in Town Council chambers? Seeing none, I'm going to go to online. Is there anyone that's called in via their phone or tablet or computer that would like to participate during public participation? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for this evening. All right, action items. Vice Chair Lepelis, any update on finance, education, health, and public safety matters?
I have not met her since the last meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Rooney is not here for planning public works and park and recreation matters. Councilmember Martin, any update parking recreation?
I have a call-in to Ms. O'Rourke, but I have not heard from her. I have nothing.
No news, good news?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Town Council on Legislative Administrative Matters. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight, as you knew about the Victor appointment. We also spoke about some job descriptions that Mr. Kellogg is going to introduce to us tonight. So that was it. Light schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Strategic Planning Committee. I know I've said we will have a meeting in October. I will promise a meeting in November. October has been a little crazy for me, but we will have that meeting in November. All right. EMS Billing Committee. Councilmember Rooney is not here, but in our packets, we did receive a financial summary from their vice chair, I believe. So that should serve as that update. Councilmember O'Rourke?
Yes. Was that included? I'm sure I can look back. Was that included as one of our communications?
I believe so. I mean, I can pass it.
It is. I just wanted to make sure that it was part of the public record.
Yeah.
It is. Communication G. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Councilmember O'Rourke, Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. First Selectman's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick updates. One, there is a water main installation that will be starting. It's already... The work is already... Prep work has already begun on Pasture Walk. It's about a half-mile stretch between Babeyree Drive and Wilton Drive. Bring it up only because it will be going on through mid-December, and there will be periods of alternating one-lane traffic there while that is going on. The Parks and Rec Department, I wanted to just share that they've... They're in the middle of their third annual Scarecrow Contest at Great Hollow Lake. I encourage everyone to go down there, and you can vote online, either on the Facebook page of the Parks and Rec Department or at the Parks and Rec webpage through the end of this month. And just a reminder that this is a fundraiser for our Community and Social Services Department. All the funds are used to help send children to Monroe's Solid Fund Days Camp, which is run by Parks and Rec. And I just made a note in my update consistent in the prior updates that I've been updating on Wheeler Road and 110 intersection. It's on the agenda, so I'll, you know, I'll hold any further comment until we get to that item, which is probably the next item anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Anything? Closing for Selectman's update. We are finished with action items. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. New business, Item A, update on Wheeler Road and Route 110 intersection. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and here we are. So in your packet this evening, I've included an update report that was provided by Chief White, who's here with us this evening. This has been presented to the Board of Police Commissioners as well. Basically, I wanted to make sure the council is updated on kind of what's transpired. The last update that I had provided was quite some time ago. It was after the... It was in 2020 after a large spike that was observed in 2019 of the number of crashes. And at the time, I was imploring the Commissioner of the State Department of Transportation to evaluate it further. That has been done, and there were a lot of... It kind of culminated in a lot of different things. But what the update here kind of outlines is everything that has been done to date, both prior to that and subsequently since the Commissioner responded to my letter in 2020. So I don't want to read the chief's report, but you've all got a lot of history here in terms of, you know, the biggest being that the primary issue that was of greatest concern was kind of an optical illusion that was created when going northbound on Wheeler, where Route 110 seemed to completely disappear if you're... As you were approaching, and that was causing cars to just cross 110 without stopping. A lot of things were done, again, which the chief has outlined in here, road markings, stop ahead, stop, stop bars, signs, signs that were put on the left side of the intersection as well. And in 20... In 2019, after some of those crashes, what was happening was some of the cars were stopping and then proceeding through the intersection thinking that traffic on 110 was stopping. They were thinking it was a four-way stop. So they also added crossing traffic does not stop plaques underneath there. The blinking stop sign, which was put on, seemed to certainly help in regards to the optical illusion issue and everything in context of everything else, but we had this new phenomenon occurring. So DOT Commissioner did authorize a road safety assessment to be done by UConn's T2 Center. That was done. We actually also got MetroCog involved to help do some data collection. And we also asked the state to reevaluate the possibility of a four-way stop there or flashing beacons. And as has happened in prior years, the analysis came back that the traffic volumes simply did not meet the state's requirements for doing that. They also outlined a lot of disadvantages for making that a four-way stop, which are kind of on... They're listed on the top of Page 4. I'm not going to read them. But they, I think, simply wanted to explain why they don't take putting new stop signs up lightly because it can have unintended consequences. And speaking of unintended consequences, one of the issues that came up is kind of going from here on out, a lot of the other possible solutions. If this were continued, if the illusion was continuing and we continue to see this level of crash experience, some of the possible solutions are fairly involved intersection redesigns, lowering of 110 in some places. These are not... These are very expensive endeavors, right? So not something we would want to do unless it was truly warranted. And some of the seemingly simple solutions like, you know, prohibiting traffic through traffic on Wheeler Road really does have... There are unintended consequences with that, which would most clearly, and I think the data analysis that MetroCog put together supported, that it would clearly divert traffic onto Old Tannery, which, as anyone, people are probably familiar, is another challenging intersection. It's not a 90-degree, and we would most certainly have to do expensive redesign there as well. So with that, you know, the chief provided updated crash data since the 2019 spike. And as you can see, after that spike in 2019, the numbers dropped fairly considerably. I believe we do have an update for 2022, though. I think we've had a couple others.
Since I filed that.
Since you filed. We have another. However, and I don't want to speak for the chief, but, you know, knock on wood, we're not seeing the severity of accidents that we've seen in the past. And my understanding is that at this point, most, you know, all of the crashes that occur, the investigation is indicating that it's driver behavior, that they're simply not... They're not looking before they cross or they're entering the intersection without making sure the intersection is clear, and it is not due to the optical illusion. So at this point, you know, the intersection is not generating an unusually high number of crashes as compared to other intersections. I think Moose Hill Road was referenced as well, which has a flashing red light beacon and a four-way stop and has, in some of these years, had more incidents than are occurring at Wheeler Road. Even with that. So at this point, the chief is saying that no additional improvements are recommended this time. or the history of the intersection, but at this point, I just wanted to put that forward, so if anybody did have questions about it, there's something they could reference about.
Thank you, Chief White. Vote once. Too many people. Vice Chair LaPellis.
And there's no way of, like, square, we don't have a right to square that road off, and I go on it all the time, so I have to really look behind me to see if there's nobody's coming, but.
Wheeler Road is square. It's a 90-degree intersection in all directions.
Okay. You say so.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
First selectman, chief, with regards to the Wheeler Road intersection issue, I mean, I don't even know if he can answer this, but has the rate of speed for those people on 110 been attributed to any of those accidents?
So, earlier than I'm talking about, there was two types of accidents. The first set of collisions, early on, in the first, say, decade of these data collection, we had an issue of you have a car at speed on 110, and now the car coming from Wheeler Road is also at speed, so you have a high-speed collision there. What's changed recently now is the Wheeler Road, probably the 85th percentile on 110 is about 50 miles an hour, where most cars travel, and now if the car is coming from zero into that, it's a much lower collision than before, where it was 50 meeting 30. And that's where the fatalities had come from, and that's where some of these serious injuries had occurred.
So, were these, were any of these accidents attributed to speeding from the 110 direction?
Speed specifically, slowly? No.
Exceeding the speed?
No, none of them are attributed to the speed on 110.
Okay.
Another interesting thing, just, I believe it's in the paper, is the dam about two years ago was load restricted. So, one of the things you see on 110 now is the detour, permanent, I would call it, because there's no end in sight to it, for truck traffic, for commercial truck traffic, is 111 to our roundabout, down 110, back over to Route 8 in the center of Derby. So, the truck traffic in that particular area has also increased over the last few years, and I expect that to remain in place until they address the dam, and I don't have a timeline from the state when that dam will be addressed.
Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, can I just ask, I've heard it quite a bit, for freedom of information rules, I think we need to have the door open.
Yeah, Craig, if you could open the door.
The door is closed. Please open it.
Ask for the top of that hand. Do we know if traffic patterns and the amount of traffic has increased back to regular flow post-COVID? I know that, in general, 2019, 2020, 2021, it was down. Have we gotten back up to regular patterns that these numbers are fairly correlated to those in 2018 and 2019?
If you've been on Wheeler Road recently, you see there was a sign received to a grant through the Yukon T2 Center, which is monitoring the traffic. If two in town, we have one place there as part of this research project, we agreed to leave it there for a few months, so Yukon can get an independent evaluation on the traffic flow, and it seems to be that we are back to the pre-pandemic numbers. I'm not sure many people know, but Wheeler Road is a commuter road, basically from Trumbull all the way out to Danbury, so that is the main, easiest way to avoid the traffic on 111, so it does handle quite a flow, both morning and afternoon rush.
That's good to hear. And then just on the Moose Hill intersection, which has the four-way stop, is there any concern about those numbers, or does it just seem to be driver error?
Most of them are. You have a four-way intersection, it would be driver behavior, you have to see the stop sign, stop for the stop sign, wait until all other applications are met, and then proceed. The difference in the accidents, I think, just what O'Rourke brought up earlier, speed. So now you have a four-way stop, where cars should be at least coming at a slower speed into each other, so the collisions are not as impactful, they're not, the change, the delta change isn't as high, so the injury rate is much lower, where now if you go down to a two-way, two directions, east-west, are at speed on 110, Wheeler's coming from a stop, you still have somebody bringing momentum to that, and that's where the injuries occur, so the collisions are a little higher.
Severity.
Yeah, they're skewed, so they're not the same collision.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Chief White. Thanks, chief.
Okay.
Two. Item B, Resolution 22-138. Madam Vice Chair.
Let's see. That the town council, okay. Resolution 22-138. I move the town council adopt this resolution. That the town council hereby approves the following to be effective immediately. New job description for accountant at WMNR. Vice job description custodian, 111, Martin Library.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So we have a motion to adopt Resolution 22-138. There's second. Second, by Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, two job descriptions to kind of take care of this evening. As you know, the first, WMNR, this is a permanent part-time position, but it's determined by, whatever it was, whenever it last filled, quite some time ago, I'm presuming, there was no prior job description, so this is newly generated, simply. I am the president of this part-time role, senior coordinator, on the town. Everyone knows WMNR is a self-running, self-sustaining corporation, so just a house of work, direction of WMNR, with consultation with the finance department, if necessary. That's the first one. The second one is the custodian position. This is our library. This is revised, really with housekeeping updates to bring it up to current, current language standards and current responsibilities. I know in LNA, we did discuss briefly the increase in hours, that's reflected in the red line, that is to bring it up to current practice and current budget as well. So, with that.
That's it. All right. I don't know if Councilmember Reed said this, this should pass consensus at LNA. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is Nicole, the director of the library. Can I interject?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt. I noticed the red, the edited one says 19 and a half, but the one that I think you may be moving says 15. It's a 19 and a half hour position.
Nineteen and a half, doesn't it? Should say nineteen and a half.
Maybe I did the, maybe I printed the wrong one, but.
We do get the, was that in the red line, or the?
It's in the red line, it's 19 and a half, but it's only in the original, it's 15.
Okay. So, all right, so noting that.
Move to amend.
Oh, I see.
The proposed job description for the library custodian to collect a 19 and a half hour wage?
Trying to think if that's the best way to do it, or just to amend the motion to reflect that change.
Move to amend the motion to reflect the change as discussed by our library director, including the 19 and a half hours.
Take a second. Any discussion on that change? Then the motion to amend. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. All right.
Thank you, council.
No problem. All right. All right, so.
Now with our amended motion, any other discussion?
Hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the amended motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That sounded like an aye to me. All those against? Hearing none, thus passes eight to zero. The amended motion passes. All right. At this point, I do have to ask our friends in the gallery to leave.
Before you do, we have to vote to enter into.
Right. I just want to give them a heads up. All right. I'm going to make a motion to enter executive session with the first selectman, as well as the town attorney. Mr. Kellogg, Justin is not going to be here this evening.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is to discuss pending litigation.
Pending litigation. Okay. All right. Any discussion on, oh, is there a second?
Second.
By Donald Lynn Wales. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of going into executive session at 7:42, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, thus passes eight to zero. We are in executive session. Mr. First Selectman, can you stop the recording? And are we all set?
Back on the record.
Great. We have.
19:49.
Exited executive session. It is 7:49 PM. No votes were taken during our executive session. Madam Vice Chair.
I move to the town council adopt Resolution 22-139. Okay. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 22-139, resolve that the town attorney and first selectman are authorized to settle pending litigation and execute a settlement on behalf of the town regarding the tax appeal for the property at 453 Pepper Street.
Motion by Vice Chair LaPellis. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kellogg, anything to add?
No. We've discussed this in executive session. I think you have all the information you need, and I'd ask that we move this forward. It's a favorable resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-139, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, thus passes eight to zero. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolution 22-140. Resolve that the town attorney and first selectman are authorized to settle pending litigation and execute a settlement on behalf of the town regarding the tax appeal for the property at 16 Commerce Drive.
You're making a motion for us to adopt that?
Sure. I move the town council adopt Resolution 22-140.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Nothing further to add. Similar to last resolution, this is a, this is a good solution of this matter for the town.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-140, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, thus passes eight to zero. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolution 22-140. Resolve that the town attorney and first selectman are authorized to settle pending litigation and execute a settlement on behalf of the town regarding the tax appeal for the property at 16 Commerce Drive.
You're making a motion for us to adopt that?
Sure. I move the town council adopt Resolution 22-140.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Nothing further to add. Similar to last resolution, this is a, this is a good solution of this matter for the town.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-140, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, thus passes eight to zero. We are in executive session. Mr. First Selectman, can you stop the recording? And are we all set?
Back on the record.
Great. We have.
19:49.
Exited executive session. It is 7:49 PM. No votes were taken during our executive session. Madam Vice Chair.
I move to the town council adopt Resolution 22-139. Resolve that the town attorney and first selectman are authorized to settle pending litigation and execute a settlement on behalf of the town regarding the tax appeal for the property at 453 Pepper Street.
Motion by Vice Chair LaPellis. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kellogg, anything to add?
No. We've discussed this in executive session. I think you have all the information you need, and I'd ask that we move this forward. It's a favorable resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-139, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, thus passes eight to zero. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolution 22-140.[1676.13]